This morning, nobody does. Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council meeting for April the 6th. I understand there is a problem on the freeway this morning, so we've got a couple of people that are still en route and will be here hopefully in just a few minutes, but we'll go ahead and get the meeting started and have them join us as soon as they can. Mr. Winkle, I know is out of town. Are you on the telephone, Mr. Winkle?
Buenos dias, Presidente Municipal, he comes to house.
What did he say?
Buenos dias, como estas? Como esta con la vaca?
Oh, good here, yes, I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thompson's also here. I understand there's a little bit of a pileup on the 60th this morning?
There was.
Okay, well, sorry, you, uh, that's not a city of Mesa Street, just to be clear. Okay. That's right.
It's nice, I got to visit with some of my constituents.
Oh, good, yeah. The first item on our agenda today is to hear a presentation and discuss the five-year capital improvement program with a focus on parks, recreation, and community facilities, public safety, and transportation. So, thank you very much. Good to have you with us, Beth, and remind me your name, gentlemen?
Scott Butler.
Thank you, Scott.
The other Scott.
I apologize again for all those emails that I've sent you.
That's okay, that's okay. You've been getting much better, so...
Thank you. I'm sorry, Scott.
No, that's okay.
Thank you, Beth. Please proceed.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We're here to present an overview of the 2018-2022 five-year capital improvement program. Today, we're going to focus on the general governmental programs in the CIP, those programs that are funded primarily with the general obligation bonds, including streets, public safety, and parks. We have representatives from those departments here to answer any project-specific questions that you may have. Today, we'll focus on answering questions about how we develop the CIP plan, how we fund those projects. Beth will review the status of those, the three main general obligation bond programs, and then finally, we'll highlight our planning efforts going into the future. Your packet today included two reports that showed a detail of the capital summary, as well as the operations and maintenance budget for these projects. The CIP represents the city's plan to meet its public facility and infrastructure needs. OMB works with, the Office of Management and Budget, works with engineering, as well as city departments, to develop an eight-year forecast of these needs to assist in the planning process. Project budgets are reviewed annually and matched with available city resources. We use a long-term outlook to account for projects that require multiple years in order to complete through early scoping, design, and construction. The long-term outlook also allows us to balance our plan and funding to match with our throughput capability of the city. This plan is reviewed annually with the city management to ensure that the city priorities, as well as community engagement and the growth needs of this city are addressed. Per the city charter, we take a snapshot of the five years, and that's presented annually to council. The first year is appropriated by council as part of the annual budget adoption process. Individual construction contracts are then brought throughout the fiscal year for your consideration and approval. There are two main categories, as far as funding types. The first is funded. These projects represent a committed funding source, and they're scheduled to be completed within the five-year period. Plan projects do not have a committed funding source at this time, however, they're included in the plan in anticipation of future needs. In reviewing the attached project detail reports, you'll find examples of these projects where their funding is noted as either funding to be determined or a proposed future bond election. The majority of the CIP that we're reviewing today is funded by voter-approved general obligation bonds, including streets, parks, and public safety. The debt service for these bonds is paid through the city's secondary property tax. Although much smaller in terms of dollars, local revenues, as well as regional awards and grants, are very important in leveraging these general obligation bonds. Much of this funding allows the city to complete either additional projects or higher-quality projects. Some examples of these two funding sources include general fund dollars that may be leveraged to use park bonds to complete ball-filled lighting improvements, or local street sales tax dollars that are leveraging Maricopa County Flood Control District grants to complete needed storm drain improvements. The streets program also benefits greatly from a county's sales tax collected under Prop 400, and Beth will touch more on this funding source later. Operations and maintenance is another important consideration regarding projects and their impact to the city's operating budget. The O&amp;M can influence the scheduling of a project to ensure that the city can meet any startup and ongoing operational expense associated with the project. These operations and maintenance costs are included throughout the planning process to make sure that the city can account for those things. These pie charts depict the percentage splits of those funding sources that we've just discussed for both next-year CIP on the left, as well as the five-year plan on the right. As you can see, the majority of the proposed CIP is related to utility infrastructure, and we'll cover that as part of our presentation next week. This pie chart shows that the city continues to spin down the general obligation authorization from the 2012 and 2013 bond elections. You'll note another funding source in the yellow portion, under the title of joint venture. This represents the portion of the CIP where Mesa serves as the manager for our two joint ventures, one being the Topaz Public Safety Communications Network, and the other being the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant. The city budgets the full cost of these improvements, but the funding is provided by all the partners that participate within those joint ventures. These are the proposed dollars that are associated with those pie charts. It should be noted that the $17, $18 amounts for next year are also included in the five-year total. This further illustrates that the general obligation authorization for parks, public safety, and streets is nearly exhausted. The bulk of the utility bond funding is committed to two major plant projects, the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, as well as the city's portion of the expansion at the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant. We group projects in five main categories, as depicted in this category funding chart. Each category represents various projects all over the city. Outside of utilities, the three largest areas are transportation, public safety, and parks, and Beth is going to review the current status of these projects.
So, I'm up. Good morning, Mayor and Council. We're gonna, today, we're going to be reviewing the bond programs for the general obligation bonds, or non-utility bonds, parks, public safety, and transportation. We'll be back next Thursday, because, you know, we know you really want to hear more, so we'll be back to talk about water resources and energy resources projects next week, next Thursday. So, kicking it off with Parks and Recreation and Community Facilities Bond Program. This program was voted in by the voters in November of 2012, and funds started to become available the first part of 2013. One of the things Mesa staff has become extremely adept at is finding money wherever we can find money to stretch our bond dollars. We went to the voters for a $70 million bond election. We even ended up with a $77.7 million program when all is said and done. We have about $3 million in CDBG for Eagles, and we were able to get, Transportation was able to get $3.2 million in CMAC and Transportation Alternatives funding from the state and the feds to do the Rio Salado pathways, so we've been able to stretch that. The other thing our park staff does very well is, for instance, if you look at the beautiful playground that's out at Desert de Royo today, that playground we were able to get for free by working with the distributor. They needed that playground installed in a desert setting in time to do their brochure for all their publicity photos, so they gave it to us for free. So, they do many of those big rock-climbing structures at Rancho Del Mar. We also bought off a floor from a showroom, and we were able to get those heavily discounted. So, wherever we can, we work with the suppliers and contractors to extend our dollars even further. This is just an overview of the city with all of the projects that have been completed to date in the bond program, and I can go through those really quick. Many of them you're familiar with: River View, Mariposa, Rio Salado, Desert Royal, Desert Trails, Fiesta, Guerrero, the Aquatic Center, Monterey Park. And I'll talk a little more about Monterey. That's been primarily land acquisition to bring all the land together for that park. And we've had many new playgrounds out in the system today. Dobson, one you've probably read about most recently. In addition, we've done a lot of shade structures, ballfields, and irrigation. I think we've touched 25 fields. We have 106 ballfield light poles, and we have some brand-new shade structures which are pretty critical to some of the playgrounds that are in high demand. So, what's left? We have a handful of projects that are left that will be completed in 17, 18, and the program will be completed and expended in this coming fiscal year.
Excuse me, Beth. Mr. Thompson has a question.
Beth, I want to make sure I know that I talked to Mr. Brady about this, but on the what's left, Monterey Park is still a what's left. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we shifted the funds from Monterey Park to the Mesa Historical, as well as Pioneer and some others, because we didn't have the funding to maintain the park once it was built. So, instead of building right away, we shifted the dollars to other projects, so...
Slide 21.
Slide 21. So, I'll go through those remaining 17, 18 projects. We did include a little bit of money in the bond program to do the initial conceptual designs in the Mesa City Center. Eagles Park and Community Center, we did bid, and you guys just recently awarded the contract for the Community Center. The project will be completed with a second phase, which will do the park phase in the coming year. Pioneer Park set to start construction in May. This is going to be a very, an amazing park. We have some very interesting climbing structures coming in onto this, into this park, and we hope to be completed in November, December, before the food trucks and a lot of things happen on the other side of the park. Signal Butte and Elliott Park, we have about $1,004,000 to do some trails. I'll talk about this again on slide 21. It's a project that started in this bond program, but there's much left to be done. Also, under construction right now is Greenfield. Later this summer, it'll be completed. Kleinman is under construction. The stadium connector on the west side of Mesa, which is kind of the missing link in the pathways out there, is under construction. Gene Autry's under construction. I believe we bid the southeast Mesa Ped Path today, so we'll see how the bids come in for that pedestrian path on our, in our southeast part of the city. And, well, future unfunded project phases. Councilmember Thompson, this is the slide we were talking about. Mesa City Center just has a conceptual design in this bond program. If we want to proceed further, we'll need additional funding for that project. Signal Butte and Elliott was programmed in master plan to do much more. It is located around the treatment plant, the new water plant that I'll be talking about in next week's presentation. The water plant will be doing the street frontage and right adjacent to that, in that part of it, but we'll also be doing, that's a pretty cool 404 wash right through the site at Stiefendrau, some very nice native vegetation and a beautiful site, and we'd like to do some trails and lookouts along with the money we have. And then, as Councilmember Thompson mentioned, Monterey Park, we did reallocate some of that funding for other projects, with the understanding that in the future, there's much more to be done. So, a lot of people ask me, what did we get for our money? And I think that's an important question to answer. If we look at it, we have, in four years, we've had 46-plus total projects, six new parks, a new aquatic center, six park renovations, six new playground upgrades, two new shade structures, 13 sites with new ballfields, 25 ballfields, and 106 lights, nine sites with major irrigation upgrades, plus we've touched many irrigation controllers throughout the system. If you look at our park system, we have, I think, 67 parks and 134 stormwater retention basins that double as parks and that we use the land for multiple uses. The average age of those park systems is 28 years, so we're getting to the point where many of our parks need these types of maintenance, ongoing upgrades. We did get three new multi-use pathway projects, and we got new signage on many of our parks throughout the system. Moving on into public safety, in November of 2013, the voters approved a $51.7 million bond package. Last year, as we were building out the dispatch center, we had a critical need for an emergency operations center, and Fire was able to get a half-million-dollar grant to build out the emergency operations center adjacent to our new dispatch center. This just gives you a quick overview of the completed public safety projects. One of the things we also bond for is the large multimillion-dollar apparatus that both Fire and police need for their operations, so there was money included for that. The completed projects, you can see, many of you have been there. The Fire and Medical Dispatch Center, I'm happy to announce that they began dispatching on March 29th at 7:00 a.m. from the center, and everything went extremely well, so some of us are breathing a little easier today. Also, a brand-new fire station 203, a beautiful station. We're very pleased with it. Police aviation phase one, we've done quite a bit of fiber network, which is critical to our communication systems for emergency operations. We did get eight new fire apparatus and vehicles and a new helicopter for operations. What's left? The aviation hangar phase two in Burn Building, and we have two smaller segments of the fiber that we still need to put in the ground to complete some of our communications networks under this program. What did we get from the program? Eight new apparatus, a new dispatch center, a new operation, emergency ops center, a fire station, a new burn training facility, 8.2 miles of conduit, 31 miles of fiber. And we got a new police helicopter, aviation hangar remodel, evidence freezer holding facility, and a shooting range upgrade for security purposes. Moving on into transportation, at the same time on the November 2013 election, we had a transportation question of 79.1 million. In transportation, the program's a little bit different because we utilize our bond money to leverage additional county-wide Prop 400 or regional transportation money. So, we use regional transportation funding, and for those projects, it has a local streets component within that funding. It's a half-cent sales countywide tax that's applied, and Mesa has a portion of that for our local streets. Today, we've collected $49 million in reimbursements from that program. On approved projects, they will reimburse up to 70% of the budget, so we're allowed to then supplement it with 30% from city funding, which really stretches our dollars very far on the transportation side. We do, with the projects you'll see today in the bond program, we have an additional expected reimbursement of $50 million that we will be collecting as we go through those projects. Transportation projects, the yellow are the completed projects, and the purple are the active projects, and a variety of things around the city that are happening. Last year, we were able to leverage additional regional transportation funding and add these seven projects to the program. The Broadway Corridor Study, which in the, all we're doing right now is an initial corridor study and concept design for, that's an aging street. If you've driven down it, you're well aware of what it's like today. It needs some work. And so, we did put a corridor study in here with the intent that in future programs, we would have phases of this and complete the work. We do have the possibility of getting more regional transportation funding for this project as we go forward in a future program, bond program. We did add five arterial reconstructs. We had them in the program just to touch the paving. We were able to line them up with the regional transportation funding and do some safety and capacity improvements. And then, the Elliott Road Tech Corridor from the 202 to Signal Butte, we added last year. We've got quite a bit of regional transportation funding in that program as well. We did have a line item in here to spruce up landscaping around the city, and you've probably seen some of these streets being completed. The arterial street paving program, I want to take just a minute to talk about this program and focus on the center picture. We are starting something mid-April, which you'll be seeing on Southern and University. It's an asphalt recycling program, where we actually take the material that's there and we do something called cold-in-place recycling. It's a long equipment train, as you can see. It's a, it's a process that works extremely well on our long, straight, wide streets, so arterials generally. We're using it for the first time to do the base course on those projects. That starts mid-April on University, I believe, and then about the first part of May on Southern, so get out, and I can let you know when the dates are for that, if you want to go out and see that happening for the first time in Mesa. The other arterial streets programs are, they're touching the pavement. We're doing reconstructs, mill and overlays type work. These are some of the improvement programs. We've got some early graphics on the Elliott Road Tech Corridor, which had a lot of stakeholder meetings, a lot of public meetings. Everybody's very excited about that project. Fiesta District, we finished the second phase, and we are currently working on another phase of Mesa Drive. So, what will we have here in the next two years completed with this bond program? We did include the 10th Street Multimodal money, which is part of the stadium connector, seven major arterial reconstruct projects. We added five arterial reconstruct projects with the current funding. We added the Broadway Corridor Study, and we've added the Elliott Road Tech Corridor Study, or Tech Project. Fiesta District Phase Two, Mesa Drive and Broadway landscaping projects. The bond funding includes numerous streetlight replacements all over the city, and several developer-driven city-share projects. So, that is it. I did want to show you online, if you go to mesaza.gov, under Maps, we maintain an interactive CIP online map for people, and it's going to take a little bit, and I apologize for that, but if you go and you click on these, you can see the projects. It's got a variety of information available there. You're always welcome to come to me or my public information person, Renee Powell. We'll give you any information you need if you're out and about, you see something funky with barricades. Give us a call, we'll work on that, too, so... But there is a lot of information available online in the city of Mesa for our programs, so I'm going to give it back to Scott to finish this out.
As Beth noted, we are completing the projects that were part of the 2012 and 2013 bond authorization, so our planning efforts are focused on how we address the future anticipated capital needs. Over the next year, these three areas will, will be bringing to you information that shows that planning process. We'll seek input as far as the alignment with your strategic priorities. We'll also engage the community to get their input, and then also, the departments have analysis that they complete. For example, the pavement condition index that transportation uses to make sure that our roads are maintained, as well as emergency response times that help us identify the ideal location for fire station going into the future. And specifically for parks, you'll notice that in the detailed project report, that there isn't much beyond what's currently funded in the parks program. Right now, they're developing their strategic master plan that will, again, engage the community to help identify those priorities going forward. For public safety, much of their improvements are focused on the facility needs that they have, as well as fire apparatus for the fire department. And then, in the Streets Department, many of those arterial reconstructs and other intersection improvements, as well as the Broadway Road Corridor, which is currently undergoing a study to identify the, the needs for that corridor. And with that, what questions do you have?
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Beth, you've been really busy. Thank you so much for your hard work. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, then, the plan for next year is to put on another bond election to fund the additional five years. Mr. Brady?
So, Mayor Vice Mayor, we haven't made that presumption yet. We, kind of from a planning exercise, that would be the year, we don't necessarily have a specific list, but that would be the year since the last bond election was 2013, so we anticipate every four to five years that we would have that. So, there would need to be a process at some point to begin developing those ideas and getting feedback from the community and from the council, and the input from their engineers about facility needs and infrastructure improvements. So, I think generally, that is the direction we anticipate, but there hasn't been a firm commitment. Obviously, that would be something from the council we'd want to work with.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Before we go out and then we acquire more land for future stations, can we make sure that we're actually going to build the stations before we acquire the land? Because I know we still have land that's out there that we had purchased for fire stations, future fire stations, and then the footprint no longer fits the land, so, for example, Adobe, and I think it's Wrecker, where we still have a piece of land sitting there that no longer fits the footprint of what we need today for our fire stations, so...
Yeah, so in the past, we have actually every, almost every bond, public safety bond, we've allocated dollars just for land acquisition. We do that because a lot of times, we anticipate the need for a fire station are oftentimes in those areas where there's lots of growth and rising values of land, and so trying to get at front of that, I think, is why the city in the past has done that, to try to not have to pay the premium price, but... So, I, you know, even in District Six, there's probably a need for newer stations, and I guess the question is, you know, when is the right time to buy the land? And I think sometimes we, and you're right, I mean, sometimes it doesn't work out, but we've, we've been somewhat successful in identifying property out ahead of time, so it's kind of that balance, you know, when do you wait to buy the property? And sometimes we wait until all development's in, then we're paying a pretty competitive price, but I think we just have to be, try to polish our crystal ball off a little more to make sure we know, like you said, you know, what is the future needs of the size and the location, but, and we kind of work together on trying to figure that out, but I think that's what we've done in the past.
I have a question as well.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ryan.
So, Mr. Brady, maybe it's for you, but I'll, just to be clear, I've had some questions saying, hey, if we're going to keep putting this kind of money out for some of these parks and stuff like this, why wouldn't we shift that towards maybe public safety or some other needs that are current in the city? And so, just to be clear, we're basically continuing what we had already started with the bond in 2012, as well as some of these new, the continuation of these, of the bonds that we've already passed, right?
Correct. Mayor, Councilmember Winkle, actually, when the bonds were authorized by the voters, there was a specific question on the ballot for just the parks, and so the money, the funds that are being spent for parks were approved by the voters for the parks program, and so, yes, that's, we really can't take park dollars and go spend them on public safety capital improvement. So, they were separate questions, and they were approved separately. And so, yeah, we're, currently, we're, we are only spending the funds that are allocated for parks, for parks programs, and the dollars for public safety, for public safety dollars, or public safety projects. Same thing for streets. The street authorization is only spent for street projects. And in, in the future, that would be most likely the way questions would be presented. There'll be separate questions presented for public safety projects, street projects, and park projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the slides at the end of the presentation, 44 dealing with planned projects for police, 45 for fire, 46 having to do with transportation. These are, the source of these projects came from the various departments, and they're saying, thanks, you know, but in the, going forward, these are our priorities?
Mayor, this is just kind of the beginning of, these are projects that have been identified in the past that were not funded, and I would add slide 21 for parks, because these are project, I think it's slide 21.
It's slide 21.
Projects that, where we've done either the design element, land acquisition, and so we're still, the next phase, the future phases would also need to be, and would be included in a list like this. Now, this is just the beginning. I mean, there would, I expect that there will be more from all of these, and there'll probably be more than we'll be able to authorize, but, you know, this is kind of the beginning of a process. We want to have, we want to engage our community and talk about their interest in capital projects. I think there's been a lot of enthusiasm around different park projects and path projects. We obviously know, as Mesa continues to grow, we have needs to expand with our public safety infrastructure. But on the other hand, on our streets, and you'll hear this also on the utility side, the older parts of the community, we need to go back and reinvest in some of our major corridors and transportation systems. We also, I think, have a need to renovate, renovate, remodel, maybe some of our fire stations in the older parts of the community also because of our changing service-delivery model, so there's just, there's a lot of things that we'll be working with the council, with the departments, and the community to identify those lists in the, in the near future.
I guess that, that was my question. It might be interesting to attach dollar figures to these projects so we could start the process of saying, if we were to go out for additional, an additional bond package in 2018, what kind of numbers are we talking about?
Yeah.
And I know we still, we're planning a lot of community engagement, the whole My Next Mesa program or campaign that we've talked about. I'm sure there'll be ideas identified through that process that might be the same or similar to this list, but, or they might be things we haven't identified previously.
Exactly, yeah.
I know we're starting this process, but this is a pretty good start, frankly, if we just, it'd be interesting to just tally the numbers for the projects that are on these few slides and see how far along that gets us already.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Brady, I want to go back to Mr. Thompson's question about the land at Adobe and Wrecker. If we're not going to use that any longer for fire station or use since we own it, is there a chance that we could sell that land and transfer those dollars into land acquisition in another part of the community? And I'm sure we bought it at a reasonable cost back then, and I know it was planned for a future fire station for perhaps the annex. for a future fire station, perhaps the annexation of Dreamland Villa back in the day. But if we're not going to use it, then maybe we can use those dollars elsewhere because we own the land.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman Freeman, we've done that in the past, and that's certainly something we look at. Most likely, and I'm assuming this is the facts, that that land was purchased with previous or public safety bonds. So what would happen is when we, if we were able to find a buyer for the land, then those proceeds would then go towards another future public safety project. So we can certainly look at that opportunity now.
Okay. Thank you. Then a question for Beth and Scott. Two Scott Butlers, now I'm really confused. I met two Beths yesterday.
I know. I know. It's hard.
What does it ever end? Back on page five, you talked about the GEO bonds and their debt service. And is there a plan to pay off that debt systematically? How often do we look at that?
The debt for the bonds?
Yeah, just the debt service when it becomes available to pay it off.
So every time we go to, just like we've just recently done to sell the bonds, we work with our financial advisors and establish a debt service payment over a reasonable period of time to pay those off, usually anywhere from 15 to 20 years. Mark the term of the bonds to be paid off. And so, and they can vary. One of the things that I have requested, because it wasn't in place 10 years ago, is we are, we work very hard so that every year, we try to have a smoothing effect to the amount of debt service, principal and interest that we're paying, so we don't have these big spikes that go up and down. And we've done a pretty good job of smoothing that out so that it's easier for budgeting purposes to anticipate what those are. And especially now that all the new debt since 2008 is now funded by the secondary property tax. We don't want to have to be changing the rate in significant ways each year to accommodate some big fluctuations in the debt service payment. So it's thinking about your mortgage, you wouldn't want your mortgage to be fluctuating by 15, 30% from one year to the next. So we try to keep it fairly smooth. And though, we use, so that's established for about a 20-year term. It's typically what we look at for our overall debt. And then when there are opportunities to do refinancing, which we've done recently, and just refinanced some older, previous GEO bonds and saved about, how much overall? Three? Three million dollars, saved about $3 million. So that's how we try to reduce the debt for the city.
Okay. Thank you. I have an easier question. What's our ownership in Topaz and Greenfield wastewater treatment plant?
So two questions. So the question, what is our ownership in Greenfield?
Ownership, yeah, percent of ownership.
Just a second. I think we're in the latest expansion, that's next, I have that in the next presentation, so let me find the numbers for you.
That's okay. We could wait.
It's kind of, yeah, we can get back to you. It's just a matter of how much we utilize, how much the capacity of the plant that we're utilizing for treating our waste, more than, I mean, we're, the majority...
We have ownership in it.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, the Greenfield plant, we have a joint venture, but we operate it. But we have the majority of the expense because we're taking the majority of the flows. But it's being expanded because our expansion in the southeast Mesa, but also Queen Creek and Gilbert are also growing, and so they're needing additional capacity at the plant. So they will then participate in not only the operational cost, but also in the capital improvements also.
How is that figured? How do you?
Again, by the flows.
By the population?
Well, no, the actual amount that's being treated.
Okay.
So Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we'll talk a little bit about it next week. But typically, treatment plants are sized based on hydraulic or flow in million gallons per day, and also in concentration of the organic loading that we treat. So there's a kind of a formula that's used for, one of the things we've found, as we put in all the low-flow fixtures, and the concentration comes up in our wastewater streams. So there's a formula we use that balances flow and concentration. This next expansion for Mesa, we're getting 10 million gallons of flow, and Gilbert is buying into an additional 4 million gallons. But Queen Creek is not getting any additional hydraulic capacity. They are putting money in the project because the concentration of the waste strength went up. So because of, you know, water conservation, it's driving concentration up. So it's higher than when it was originally designed many years ago, 15 years ago.
All right. Thank you.
And then Topaz is similar, just a unit, I think it's by radio, the number of radios that you have, and that determines your cost.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Beth, on a follow-up to that, and Chris, can we make sure that we have those capacities broke out? Because one of the concerns that I have is, for example, you mentioned Queen Creek's not really, they're paying in for the concentration levels, but they're not necessarily paying in for the capacity or the flow rates. But yet, they approved their North Area Plan, so when they start building subdivisions and start growing, when they hit that capacity, what happens? And what are the charges and how, you know, because I want to make sure that we're being proactive instead of reactive.
Sure.
Especially as Queen Creek starts to grow. Because they need to make, we need to make sure that we're not, that our citizens aren't bearing the brunt of their waste.
No, no, yeah. Well, it's not just, it's the operational side. And so I think all that is metered and we understand, we know what that's coming into the plant. So, yeah, we can report on how that's done.
And Councilmember Thompson, I believe next week, right after the, or right after we talk about the bond funding, then the operations staff will be presenting on the operations side of it.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Well, great, great presentation. I thought it was very impressive to see. We had a couple of gentlemen come Monday to our council meeting, raising questions about the amount of bond debt that we have. And this would have been a great presentation. Hopefully, they've watched. I think, and I don't mean that in a critical way. I think for people, seeing the amount of bond debt we have, sometimes you go, wow, that's a lot of debt. But then you say, well, it's parks, it's streets, it's utilities. That's what you want your city government to be doing. And so this was a very impressive presentation to see how the city has delivered on the promises that were made.
So let me ask, Ryan, what is the total assessed value of the city currently? Generally, just off the top of your head, what would you say? I'm just like, because everybody talks about amount of debt, but we understand the value of property in the city and what we're having to deliver to, what are we, 130-plus square miles and half a million people?
135.
And...
The total full cash value of the city right now is?
For the coming years, 40 billion dollars. 40 billion dollars. So we are...
Is the city-owned property or that's...
No, no, no. This is what the value on the books at the appraisal. And my point is, that's what is being used to pay off all these bonds. And the, and the, and the point is, it's a big number, there's no doubt, but it's a big city.
Yeah.
And it's spread out over 130 square miles and 450,000 people. And so, and it's continuing to grow. So these, I think we try to be prudent and try to pay off the debt. We try to use it carefully, but it is an important instrument in being able to deliver projects in a timely manner. But if you think about it, these are projects that'll last for decades. And so it spreads that cost out over a period of time. Interest, we try to mitigate interest and keep interest costs low, but what we are at the municipality, so the interest cost, or, you know, we try to manage that low, we try to structure our debt so we can minimize that. And then we take advantage, on the utility side this year, we did a refinancing, we saved 13?
We saved, with the defecence and the refunding, we saved, we retired $12 million in utility debt.
There you go. So anyway, all this is tied together, but I just, I think we're trying to be, meet the needs of our community, but at the same time, to be prudent in how we go about financing.
It might bear repeating what was said at the study session before Monday's meeting too, about the fact that we're anticipating lowering the...
Oh, yes. The tax rate.
The tax rate.
Because our values...
Because the levy remains the same.
Yeah.
And the more growth there is.
Right. So the tax levy, the cost of debt, what we need to, what we'll pay in debt service is the same. That hasn't changed, but maybe tweaked a little bit with these savings. But what's happening is, because of new construction and increasing values in the city, the amount of, the tax rate can be lowered about 5% to generate the same amount of revenue. So as a good news is, it both shows that values are increasing in existing residential and commercial, but also is, shows that the addition of new value from commercial and residential is also helping to pay for the outstanding debt we have.
And what is the amount of debt service that we have? What's the levy amount that stays the same?
130...
The general obligation property tax levy is $33.4 million.
$33.4 million per year is the amount that we need to raise through the secondary property tax.
Correct.
And so rates are going down because more folks are joining into the obligation.
The values are increasing.
Okay. So 33 more, 4 million is a lot of money, but put it in the context of the slides that we just saw and what's been delivered over the last few years. And again, this was all voter-approved.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Great, great presentation. Next item on our agenda, one B is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the budget for parks, recreation, and community facilities. Mark, good to have you with us.
This is his third.
Could be.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Thank you. Mark Hirschberg, Director, Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities. Just wanted to give you a little bit of an operational overview, and our budget discussion is kicking off for the departments on the operations side. Again, PRCF, Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities, is committed to providing sustainable facilities and opportunities to enhance the quality of life and well-being of our communities. Beth mentioned some of the inventory and covered the parks and basins, piece of it covering more than 2,300 acres, but also in that inventory is nine aquatic centers, five recreation and community centers, the convention center, amphitheater, the cemetery, Dobson Ranch Golf Course, the urban fishing lakes, two spring training facilities, thousands of recreation programs, and also 4.3 million square feet of building space, city-owned building space. Some of our recent accomplishments that were also in the previous presentation, the Fiesta Sports Park development opening in November, the Dobson Ranch Playground renovation, Ginatri Tennis Center improvements, Kingsborough Park Playground Shade, Playground Shade and Boulders at Rancho Del Mar, irrigation improvements at a number of our parks, and spring training attendance of 354,111, which is a Cactus League record, might even be a Major League record. The Cubs broke their record of last year with a attendance of 251,599, and the A's had 102,212, which was better than last year as well. We did have two additional games at each facility, but Mesa continues to lead the pace in spring training attendance. Desert Royal Park was awarded with the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association Facility of the Year Award, as well as Arizona Forward's Crescortia Award for Environmental Excellence. Our goals are obviously to always increase citizen utilization of city programs and facilities while expanding the parks and open space and land development opportunities throughout the community. And to do that, we need to continue to focus on our service delivery and our customer service. And we're trying to improve our marketing and outreach efforts to get the word out about what we offer and the number of programs we offer and the ease of participating in those programs. And then finally, we want to ensure that our buildings, operating systems are well-maintained and functioning to provide safe and comfortable facilities for employees, residents, and guests to work and recreate in. Couple of ways we measure our success, obviously, in overall attendance. And you can see last year was another successful year, and we continue to have over a million contacts with residents throughout the year in our programming efforts. And important, you know, while we count those numbers, it doesn't include some of the other groups that are providing services and utilizing our facilities from the community youth groups that are playing on our fields. It didn't, doesn't include the spring training attendance, doesn't include those that utilize the services and programs offered by Arizona Disabled Sports at the Broadway Recreation Center, or Step Up Schools at the Washington Activity Center. Our attendance from year to year, 2014 being on the left, 15 in the middle, and 16 on the right, continue to level out and pace. We've seen a leveling out at the convention center, which I'll highlight on the next slide as well, which is good. Our recreation center attendance continues to fluctuate, just based on some of our large rentals that outgrow the space and then have to transfer to other facilities. And then our recreation programs continue to grow. And that number is really attributed to an increase in Ramada utilization of rentals as we've added more shade at playgrounds and parks. The demand for those spaces has continued to rise and increase. Golf rounds remain consistent, and then aquatics growth, we continue to see growth in the program offerings in aquatics. Mentioned the, previously, the convention center and amphitheater. We're starting to see that attendance level out after years that it was riding the waves of the economy and that trend. But again, we seem to hit a mark of where we're at and leveled out on attendance. We have, you know, trying to balance the needs of the community with the amphitheater is always a challenge of being surrounded by a neighborhood, but while also trying to utilize that great concert venue to provide outstanding concert venues, but we rely on outside promoters to bring us those shows, so we've become a rental facility at that. So we do have two concerts coming up in two weeks that are both approaching sellout capacity, so those will be a good boost this spring.
Excuse me, Mark?
Yes, Mayor.
I've just been curious about the convention center generally. I mean, the reason we call Centennial Hall Centennial Hall is because it was built in 1978, so it's a facility that's been around for a while. I just, is that, is it functioning as well as it could? I mean, a lot of times I drive by and that parking lot is exceeding capacity, and I go, wow, what a successful facility, and then other days, not so much. But how often, how many events a year do we have there? Is it something that is, we'd put in the successful category, or is it something that needs updating in order to be competitive?
Mayor, we, again, our, you know, fluctuates from year to year based on the convention rotation and what's happening. It's very successful from a consumer trade show standpoint. Trying to attract large regional or national conferences becomes a little bit harder because of the space that we have, some of the audiovisual difficulties with ceiling heights, they want higher in new buildings. But it continues to be the largest space in Mesa for that type of meeting space. You know, even with the new Sheridan at Wrigleyville West, it's still not, doesn't have the largest meeting space to put all those groups in. So it's very much beneficial. What we've really tried to do over the years is shift the mentality of, you know, of how that space is used, and it just doesn't have to be meeting space and convention space, but it can also be used for community group space, for meetings, for high school testing, for graduations, whatever the case may be. So we're really trying to focus on that as well. The Marriott is going through some remodeling, so that always helps too, when they're investing in their property to help draw some additional business as well. And we continue to work with that new ownership group that just came into that property to do that and work cooperatively to draw businesses. We've sent our staff on the road with Visit Mesa when they're, when they are focusing on the trade show market and the business market. And we're about to have the largest show that Mesa has ever had in business on a aeronautics conference that's coming soon. And from a sales standpoint, will be the largest event that's ever been held at the convention center. So we're really trying to get the word out there and market and prove it and highlight the great benefits of the facility. But it does, just because of the age of the facility, which is, and I was going to touch on that later, throughout the entire system, infrastructure is always a challenge, but we're doing the best we can with what we have.
Sure. And we're making, it's generating revenue. Are we turning events away, or is there additional capacity that's not being used?
There's additional capacity that could be used. We're, you know, obviously, the most popular times of the year, the spring and fall are, we are turning events away just because we're booked on multiple weekends or, and there's not, you know, we try to go with the historical usage and continue to meet those, the loyalty of those customers. But there's room to grow. You know, we need to look at, one of the things we've been discussing as a staff is how do we become more competitive, particularly in the off-season and the summer months, and working with the larger properties, hotel properties in the city to attract some of those businesses.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Just real quick, Mark, are you working at all with some of our larger institutions? For example, Mesa Public Schools or Mesa Community College? for example, Mesa Public Schools or Mesa Community College, to maybe partner with them when they have conventions, educational conferences, and those kind of things, as well as graduations, to try to, you know, certainly bring more people to your site?
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's been a historical partnership that we continue to work with those groups and the school communities to bring as much of their events as possible there when they need it.
Just a quick cap to my line of thought is, I'm not looking for places to spend money. We have a lot more opportunities to spend money than we have money, but it just, I'm just curious to know, does the convention center need an update? You know, in order to remain commercially competitive, are we behind, you know, unable to compete because of the age and the status of the facility? And in order to be competitive, do we need to go to the voters with the idea of making some upgrades or improvements there? That's a conversation I know we're going to start on a lot of.
So Mayor, I think part of the answer to that is, I think from Mark's perspective, I suspect, is we need, we're desperately trying to maintain what we have. Making sure that carpets replaced, the HVAC, so that's our struggle right now. This, there's not a convention center in the country, and having had experience in overseeing the operations of some of the largest ones in the country, they don't make money. They are, but they do bring business into your community, and that's why we work closely with the Marriott. So I think there is a list of capital projects we actually might want to approach, and this won't be a favorite topic for our friends down the street, but we do receive some funding from Visit Mesa to invest into the convention center. And at some point, I think it would make sense, because we've also allocated significant amount of dollars to them to improve their facility, their Visit Mesa facilities. I think at some, some point in the maybe next couple of years, it might be nice to, you know, work with them and say, hey, in three years from now, we need to take, we need to double, triple the amount that's being allocated in a particular year and use that to go do some, maybe some of these modernizations, whether it's HVAC or, well, multimedia stuff or other things that we might need. So that may be the way to approach it, because that's really what it's tied to, is we're bringing visitors into Mesa, so that might make, that may be the way to fund this that may make the most sense.
Thank you very much.
And Mayor, Mr. Brady, to your point, we do, the infrastructure piece and investing in that equipment is essential. We've just done a major plumbing upgrade this summer. We're going to tackle a major HVAC project there to make sure that the building systems, we're trying to really just focus on the building functions and the safety of the building and make sure it's functioning well before we address some of the aesthetic things on the interior.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
I know that it's not a revenue generator, maybe in other aspects of the city. Have we thought about or looked at having a third party come in and operate and schedule the convention center so that it's used to its capacity? And that way, it kind of takes a little bit of the load off of parks and rec, but really gives it to the experts that know how to book conventions and different things like that, so that it is utilized year-round. You know, I wouldn't have a problem at all if it was breaking even, but the fact that it's losing money and then we're going to dump more money into a sinking ship kind of concerns me a little bit.
Well, again, Mayor, Councilman Thompson, there's not a convention center in the country that makes money. They are loss leaders with the purpose of bringing visitors into your community. There's not a case out there that would say otherwise. But I think the way we have worked carefully with the Marriott, so really, we've become an extension to Marriott, so we're working both together to book it. I don't know that a third party, there may be some advantages, but we work with third-party planners, so most of these individuals who are looking for space of this size already, they are hiring someone, and we're very connected with the conference planners, and we host them, and really, we use Visit Mesa as kind of that other source to do that. So I mean, it's something we could look at. I'm not sure that there would be any more activity, because, and I don't know that the Marriott would want us to, our relationship with them is so tight that they like that flexibility that they can come and utilize our space with short notice, too.
Well, I think it'd just be better, you know, because like the mayor said, there's some days you drive by in the parking lots at capacity, and there's other days you drive by, it looks like a ghost town.
Right.
And it would be great if we drove by every day.
Yeah.
Every day.
Right.
It was at capacity.
Yeah, so Mayor, Council, that'll never happen, because it's just like the MAC. You have days where you're setting up and taking down, and so, now, that doesn't mean every day that's available is booked, but it never would, you would never have a facility that size where you would always have an activity in there, because you're usually setting up and taking down for some days in between different events, and a lot of it's driven by the season of the year, too, when these activities happen. But, but I know, I've had conversations with the new general manager of the Marriott. They're very pleased with the relationship they have with the city. He's bringing new ideas, and I think that's what we really want to is foster that, because that's really the payoff, right? So that if he's booking, if we're booking events together and people are staying in his hotel, then the bed tax gets collected, and then that helps us out, and that's really the key.
Mr. Freeman, and then Mr. Luna.
I have my question answered.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Luna.
You know, certainly because I work for Mesa Public Schools, and we've had a number of community activities there, a part of the deterrent not going there is the catering cost. Is that something we might want to look at? Because I think that's a real deterrent for organizations wanting to use a facility, and is that something we might want to look at to get more activity in this center?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, Vice Mayor Luna, some of those questions, just a couple of things to highlight. One, the staff there is extremely small and efficient, and they do, and as Mr. Brady mentioned, they have those relationships with the meeting planners. Visit Mesa, the other larger hotel properties, the Marriotts, the Sheridans, also act as an extension of us and utilize us when they're outbooking as well. So there really is a good partnership there in place. The expensive pieces of operating the convention center is the audiovisual and the catering are the things that we've contracted out. One of the things that we review with each of those vendors, to Vice Mayor's point, is where they're at within the market trend for the convention center hotel business, and they are within the line of what those other hotel, the properties and convention centers are offering. So we make sure that we're staying consistent and competitive with that type of level of service of, with the catering cost in particular. The cost recovery, in a few slides you'll see ahead, the actual cost recovery of the convention center continues to go up, and we're at eighty-seven, we finished last year at eighty-seven percent cost recovery. I think about six, seven years ago, when I first got here, we were closer to the sixties, high sixties, low seventies, so we're continuing to grow that cost recovery number higher and higher again, and a lot of those are through that increased expansion of those partnerships and looking at opportunities to utilize the facility in ways that we haven't traditionally, as well as trying to be more aggressive with some of our partnerships and recruiting of promoters for concerts, because that usually becomes straight profit right through there, because it requires very little staff, and the tickets and the promoters are paying the majority of those fees, so those end up being very good for us. It's just the way the concert industry has booked and changed, it's very competitive, and a lot of those promoters own their own venues, so we really become an overflow venue for that, when they can't fit those acts into their own venues. So we're continuing, that's an area we continue to look at and evaluate and figure out how to use, but I'm very pleased with the efforts of the staff there to look at the outside marketing opportunities, look at growing partnerships and utilizing that space as much as possible, and as well as those efforts to decrease, you know, increase that cost recovery number, so we're getting as close to a hundred percent as possible.
Let me just say, I'm real proud of the convention center. Every city needs a place to do stuff, and so, I mean, even though it doesn't maybe make money, I mean, it's an essential part of being a city to have a location like the convention center. At the last weekend, I was at the Tor de Mesa, that place was crawling with people. I mean, we needed to have that big staging area. Tonight, Mr. Luna is covering for me, thank you very much, the Golden Rule Banquet, there'll be eight-hundred people in that room, most of them from outside of Mesa. I mean, it's essential, and it's a wonderful, beautiful facility. I just raised the question, because I am proud of it, I wonder if I want to keep it at that top tier and have it continue to be, serve that very important function in our community.
Yeah, Mayor, I think you have a very good question, and maybe we can sit down with Mark and, you know, not necessarily limiting it by funding, but kind of talk about maybe a five-year plan of what are some of the things, not only the building infrastructure, but some, maybe some of the other things that we could look at to modernize that facility to make us more competitive going into the future, and we can do that.
Thank you. Mr. Whitaker.
I have a question on slide eleven, but I don't know, that's skipping ahead, or I don't know if you're finished with your presentation or if now's the appropriate time. So going back to the convention center amphitheater, we actually spent three-point-four million dollars in fifteen, sixteen. We're estimating that we're going to spend five-point-two million dollars in sixteen, seventeen, but then we're only budgeting three-point-one million dollars in our seventeen, eighteen, so I'm wondering if you could just comment on why that number is swinging all over the place?
Mayor, Councilmember, a lot of that is pass-throughs, where we have to book a higher, we ask for a higher amount of the expense to pay security costs, catering costs, and then if we don't have that business need, then that number decreases. So we're just trying to prepare ourselves to go forward without having to come back and do continuous contingency requests for the business need.
He's trying to be, he doesn't, it's driven by activity, so it's driven by the concerts and activities, so it may end up being higher, so we just don't know if we're going to have as good a year as we had this year, so we're just being conservative. If he, if he needs, he ends up booking more than what's in the budget, we'll give him the contingency to cover those costs. So that's what's, what's happening, as he said, it's really showing he had a very good year, where that number went up, because then he had more.
Right.
Expense, but it's getting offset by the revenues that are coming in at the gate.
And that's the situation we're going to be in this year, Councilmember. We're about to submit a contingency request because we've had increased in activity, so we need to record the expenses, the revenues coming in, so that we can pay the security costs, catering costs, whatever the case may be due to increased activity.
We just don't always know today how much activity is going to be at the amphitheater during the next year and a half.
Yeah, so I guess going to that point, does that mean the more we actually use the convention center and amphitheater, that it actually is more draining on the community?
No, no.
Well, I'm looking at the revenue side, and we've only, I mean, if you look at the revenue side for the convention center, we're at two-point-nine, two-point-three, two-point-two. It's not fluctuating very much at all on the revenue side, so if you're saying that this is due to the increased demand for the convention center or the amphitheater, I would expect that the revenue would be a lot higher, and we would actually be turning more profit in essence on that.
Is it being recorded under the convention center? Is it not being recorded there?
No, it's at the convention center.
Okay.
The...
We should be doing more activities and it costing us more, if that's, that's a good point, and so we need to look at that. The thinking is that as, in the coming year, or even this year, if there's another event, we don't, it's not, it shouldn't cost us more to bring in another event. We should just be able to certainly recover our costs and make a little bit of money on almost every event, but maybe the numbers aren't reflecting that, but that's, would be our intent, so we need to make sure that that's being reflected here in the numbers.
And I believe that number also includes a restricted account that's in there as well, that has some of that partnership with Visit Mesa, so that capital expense number may, I believe, is showing up in that report on the estimate, Candace, is that correct?
We're not quite there yet, but.
Yeah, we're not, we're having some... Mayor and Council, as we look through, fortunately and unfortunately, Mark is very good at giving presentations, so he's great being the first department, because he also has the most complex financial structure behind, because all of his facilities are funded in different ways. And so when we're looking here, we try to give you a summary by area or category, but what we do have is we actually have the breakdown by convention center, and so, Councilmember Whitaker, we can give you, and the full council, we can give you that full breakdown by the convention center, which is actually tracked separately as a business entity, and I think that might give you a little bit better view into that. When we roll it up into these type of summary tables, it's multiple funds, it's capital funds and operating funds that are going into there, so sometimes it gets a little tricky, and he's got a lot of pass-through funds, as he was talking about, so when they do catering, we get the expense, but we also get the revenue, it gets paid to us, and we pass it on to the caterers, and so that gives some fluctuation in the expenses. It can get complicated looking at it here when you're trying to look at it by facility, and so we can give you more detailed reports, I think, that will assist in looking at it by facility for you.
But it shouldn't cost us more to have events there.
Correct, it should not. They usually, they should go in tandem, they should go, the expenses and the revenues should go up together or down together as we do it. At the beginning of each fiscal year, they make an estimate on what they think their activity is going to be over the next fiscal year, and we try to budget to that level of activity, and then through the year, they'll watch that, and we'll come back, and we do, sometimes we call them business cases, we do it with the Mesa Arts Center as well, if they're going to bring in a large event that they didn't know about ahead of time. We need to give them the budget capacity in order to have those expenses, but they also come with a revenue capacity as well.
And that's why I believe, to Candace's point, that the expense column is showing the operating capital, with the HVAC project that I mentioned is close to a million dollars, there's a lighting project that's over three-thousand, three-hundred thousand dollars, so I believe those numbers are rolled up in this report showing that five-million-dollar expense number. So actual operate, if we pull out the capital, the actual operating is going to be closer to that revenue numbers to the break even.
So I'm assuming there's roughly one-point-eight million dollars in capital expense that's rolled into the convention center number, does that sound about?
Let's break it out and give it to you separately.
And we do have those, we didn't provide all of those kind of details today, but we do have those.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, there's a large variance in that one-line item, that's, you don't see it on the revenue side, but it's significant on the expense side.
Let's break it out and give it to you, because we'd be kind of guessing right now, but I think that's a good assumption.
Again, Candace mentioned the funding sources are a little bit unique for our department, both on the front end of setting up the budget, as well as on the back end when we're recording our work and where our staff is doing that, performing their time. So the funding's derived from the general fund, the enterprise fund, grants, restricted funds. Parks and aquatics maintenance, recreation, facilities management are supported by the general fund, convention center amphitheater, golf course, spring training operate within the enterprise fund. Basin maintenance is funded through the environmental fund, cemetery operates within its own fund, and then, of course, we are continuing looking for grant dollars, partnerships, sponsorships to offset program and facility expenses, enhancement expenses. Little bit about the budget summary by fund we were discussing earlier, we jumped a little bit ahead there. This, again, breaks it down by the specific funds, the general fund, the enterprise fund, grant funds, restricted funds, et cetera, both the enterprise or on the expense side on top and the revenues on the bottom. The revenue summaries by area, again, I do want to point out that for the first time in the history of the department, we surpassed the ten-million-dollar mark in collected revenues last year. There's a couple of oddities that show up there that are, in facility maintenance in particular, those are simply reimbursements from a mistake that a contractor made, and they're reimbursing us for those, but you can see those revenues there continue to remain, continue to increase. The expense summary by area that we were discussing with Councilmember Whitaker and the way those are broken down, again, I do want to point out that golf operated at a hundred percent, one-hundred-and-sixteen percent cost recovery, the cemetery at one-hundred-and-fifty-two percent cost recovery, the convention center at eighty-seven percent, and our recreation programs operated at about fifty percent cost recovery.
Five-zero, or?
Five-zero.
Okay.
Budget adjustments for seventeen, eighteen. We made reductions in our general services and other commodities and some of our contracts to help with the budget challenges this year. Some of the enhancements that were added back in, though, to offset those are the parks, the Proposition Two-O-Six minimum wage issues with our parks contracts and our custodial contracts. We've added, MPS, Mesa Public Schools continue to be one of the greatest resources for us in terms of marketing and getting the word out of our programs and offerings. They've changed the way they do that and allow us to do that, and we're charged to do that, so this, that ten-thousand dollars just covers that cost, and then we're going to add some part-time staff supervision at some of our sand volleyball courts to help see if we can capture some additional revenue from that area, that is, that continues to grow in terms of private leagues and others that are offering that. And then, one of the things we're going And then, one of the things we're going to add to our facility management group is the preventive maintenance measures for our C-CURE system, which is our badging and door operations, that's a system that's continued to age, but hasn't necessarily received the attention from a preventive maintenance that it needs, so we're going to dedicate some funding and some training for staff to be able to address that system as we continue to move forward. You know, as, with our department and all the buildings and land we have, aging infrastructure is one of our biggest challenges to address, and trying to keep up with that life cycle replacement, and Mr. Brady mentioned maintaining what we have, continues to be, trying to find that balance, as we've added so many great new amenities through the parks bond, but one of the greatest things that I'm most proud of that accomplishment through that is, and Beth highlighted, is all the things we touched within the existing parks that we were able to restore, repair, or breathe new life back into a facility to help with that aging infrastructure. Then I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? I think we, yes, Mr. Whitaker.
Do we have any smart sensors or anything in some of the lower, not lower-end parks, but the ones that don't have buildings or keeping track of people coming and going? Do we have a type of sensor or something that picks up on activity in the parks that we have numbers of how many people, like the utilization or anything like that?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember, that technology is just now starting to come out, and the way they're starting to attach it is in playgrounds, in those areas that have playgrounds, and they're starting to put, add, be able to add some sensors on light poles and stuff, so that you can get some of those calculations. We, just the cost and the management of it, and that technology being so new has prevented us from doing it at this point, but as it continues to grow and become more popular and get more refined, that's something we will consider in the future.
So, is there any, like, analog ways that you keep track of utilization of a park in the community to say, you know, this is highly utilized in this specific area, nobody ever goes to the park over in that part of the neighborhood?
Mayor, Councilmember, one of the great things about parks is that they engage the community, so a lot of times we hear from neighbors that back to a park or that front a park and tell us what type of activity is occurring in that community, policing, so to speak, kind of helps us gauge where they're at. Our park rangers, they're a small but mighty staff, and they try to cover as much of the area as possible and keep an eye on everything, and they, they give us that feedback as well as where things are popular. In some of our most popular parks, we've had to Riverview, Red Mountain, during these times of the year where the weather's beautiful and the parks are full with people, we've actually have park ambassadors that are there on the weekends to help referee, if you will, remodel our reservations, and they kind of give us that feedback, as well as the high-peak times, the high-usage times of when they're out there, and as well as our park maintenance staff, as many parks as possible, and they give us that feedback as well.
Great, thanks, Mark. Thank you. If there's no other questions, thank you, Mark, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda for this meeting is information relating to the current job order contracting projects. Council, any questions regarding those? Seeing none, the next item is acknowledged receipts of minutes of boards and committees. If there's a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Mr. Winkle, did you get a chance to vote on that?
Yes, aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is here reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, anything to share? Hearing none, Mr. Brady, can you help us with the scheduling of meetings and general information?
Yes, and first, you know, Councilman Freeman must have had some foreknowledge to this, we actually do have an offer on the fire station land at Adobe and a Rucker, and we are now out doing the appraisal to see if that is an offer we can accept, so, well done, I didn't, the staff was texting me while you were speaking, so. This Saturday, April eighth, from eight AM to noon, will be our next household hazardous waste collection event. It'll be at the Center Street facility located at twenty-four twelve North Center Street. Next study session will be Thursday, April thirteenth, will be at seven thirty AM, and it will be followed by an Eastmark Community Facilities District Number One board meeting, and then we have a significant milestone tomorrow, it'll be Carrie's birthday, so make sure you wish her happy birthday tomorrow.
Wow.
Significant, yeah.
Thirty again.
Thirty. Happy birthday, Carrie, I'm not going to be here. The next item on our agenda is to convene an executive session, is there a motion to do so? Thank you, Mr. Luna, and seconded by Mr. Freeman, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you, we'll convene an executive session. And Mr. Winkle will join us telephonically for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.